Discussion about changing the base pay ordinance. I reached out to him to make sure that I didn't misrepresent anything. He accepted the, the offer of the sixty eight thousand in lieu of the, of the other offer. As, as I indicated, and so that's the, that's the position of the candidate right now. We are literally, I've got Mr. Patterson here, as I said the other night. Mr. Patterson has done an enviable job. Being general manager while we try to get a candidate that will get us back into state compliance. This candidate gets us back into state compliance immediately, which also will. I'm told immediately cause a deference of any, any five hundred thousand dollar fine. For the city by the health department that was discussed at a previous council meeting when the health department came. So that is the main purpose of this meeting, open it up for discussion.
To the extent that an ordinance is needed, the math says we can't pass an ordinance here today. Three, three members present, we would need four to, to suspend the rules, so. Anyway, that's just a procedural point.
Do we have another council member who said choose colorway?
I don't know, but I hope to.
It's probably not recognized yet, so we. Mr. Valley, you want to, you want to respond to that?
You have to have four city council members to suspend the rules and place on study file reading. Other than that, we would have to read the. We just lost the quorum altogether at this point, but I mean, everybody's got to read the entire ordinance on the first reading and then. Have another day to come back and, and you can adopt it on the first reading, but you still need two other readings unless you have another meeting to do so.
We, we have lost form now, but I'm gonna go ahead and, and address two issues to council members who are here and to the public. In order to. Meet state standards with the health department, the city of Allen West Island has to be in compliance with health department regulations on. Licensees or certifications and we are short and the hiring of, of this candidate. Would get us in compliance immediately. He's agreed to the counter offer that we, we offered after last Tuesday. We have a number of pending urgent matters before this city regarding the water and sewer department. The city council is the governing body of the, of the public utility. We have federal and state regulations that we have to meet. And it's the responsibility of the city council and the administration to meet those obligations, so. I'm not sure where it leaves us when we don't have a quorum or we don't have enough council members present to conduct the business that the federal state government are requiring and mandating that we conduct. But I'll say that, you know, the warrant safety, the, the public safety, the warrant service system, this is a public utility. Unlike anything, almost anything else we do, public utilities are regulated by an entirely different set. Of laws and regulations that come with it criminal penalties if you put at risk the public safety. We have an urgent obligation. I would encourage you to reach out to your colleagues and get them here so we can dispense with this as soon as possible. This is a matter of extreme urgency and has been for a long time and. We're, we're not, we're not competitive with our salaries. We have a very difficult recruiting people to come here. We have a candidate that meets those requirements, those state requirements. We have an opportunity to take advantage of it. It will literally save us half a million dollars in fines. So I would urge you to please contact your colleagues and ask them to show up. The other issue. Which is related, so and we're not in a, a regular meeting, so I'll, I'll move down to Oakland Perry Street. The, the water leak and, and we have people from the water department here and Jeff's here. Is on a state highway, highway forty nine business Oakland and Perry. The, it's been closed now for, it'll be going on two weeks, I think. The state highway department has the ultimate jurisdiction over that highway. They want us to get this fixed and get it reopened. I was informed of maybe yesterday that we were gonna, we were in danger of going over the five thousand dollar limit, so. I asked to just be added to the agenda, said that the city council could review the expenditures and approve expenses. Again, we are under Arkansas state regulations. It's a US federal highway. We've had it closed for two weeks. What we need is approval to, to pay these expenses. We have one vendor. He has already not been paid for previous expenses. And needs to be paid in order for them to service this project so we can close it off and, and reopen the street to the public and meet the demands of the heart, so highway department in the state. The other issue on the, but we don't have a corner, we don't have the requisite number of, of council members here to do this.
We began with a quorum, and a quorum, the meeting properly opened by law. The meeting complied with the Freedom of Information Act. The body can continue to meet and discuss, it just cannot take any legislative access until a quorum is reestablished. So to the extent that you want to have a presentation, I suggest you go ahead and make the presentation. So that the people can be informed and maybe a quorum will be established as you make the presentation.
Before you start, I do want you to know, when I was at five to the committee, at seven thirty that morning, I did respond back. The amount of time that I would have during the noon hour and that's why I'm here. However, is there not a, a alternate that we can reschedule a meeting later on this afternoon after four thirty after people offer work? To take care of this urgent matter?
Well, as you said, I could be here. I could be here before six if we could take, you know, as far as, as far as my attendance is concerned, I can't be out here after six and otherwise obligated.
I understand, you have to.
When, when we had meeting the other night, we asked what time to have it so we could have this discussion and we could have a quorum and we could have enough people here. It's the responsibility of, especially that when we didn't, we didn't, we didn't do this at the last minute. We did it at the regular scheduled meeting. We asked what would be the best time. We have two gentlemen here that are also very busy schedules and that's usually the biggest concern unless it's a school year and then we have teachers and so forth. But I mean, we all have jobs, we're all busy, but twelve o'clock today was the day and, and we don't have a quorum. And that's the issue.
I have to get time that I had to be out here at one o'clock.
When we schedule these meetings, what happens is we, we then have to have staff work to get ready for them. They have to change their hours, their schedules. We have to pay time and a half in some cases. We have, because we have costs involved in the radio and so forth.
I notified you three or four days before, but I would only have an hour today.
Well, we can do this in an hour. We're going to be out here.
Well, we can vote, okay.
No, but that's not my problem. It's not your fault either, and I appreciate y'all sticking around, but. I would encourage you to talk to your colleagues about their sworn obligation and duty to the public. They knew that they had plenty of time and we, we had a quorum, but anyway, the work on Oakland and Perry Street has to get done. We're under state law and mandates. The same is true with the water sewer general manager. And, and then the other issue is the mini excavator agreement. In your packet is a signed work order dated in September twenty twenty one, which was after. The appropriations, the authorizations, the ordinances were approved for, for us and for me to. Obligate the city to buy the mini excavator. And so that's in your packet to demonstrate that even though you, the, the body later unappropriated. The expenditure, it had already been obligated. The other things that had been appropriated that were unappropriated had not been obligated. This is the only one that I can recall anyway that was actually legally obligated. And, and that payment is due today. It's actually passed to, it's eight thousand something dollars. And, and we, in my opinion, have exposed the city. If we don't pay it, they can take action against us. And also the, the equipment we're buying is the equipment that. Cuts the overhanging trees, does the ditches, does some of this work that we haven't been able to do because, because we haven't had the equipment to do it. We now have the equipment to do it, but they're threatening to come get it if we don't make a payment. There was some uncertainty about whether it was properly approved and so forth. There's no question that was appropriated, no question that the council approved it. The question is, did we obligate it before you want to prove it? And the document in front of you is dated well before that. And signed by me as well as the vendor for that specific piece of equipment and. So I would maintain that we have to make the payment and if we don't, we're in violation of the law. So those are the three issues. I'm not going to keep you any longer than necessary, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
As Mr. Reese said, the equipment, the city really stretched out the purchase order. I'll be finally back at the place of my mayor's office two days ago.
The chief of staff, it did not include this signed document that is here. I spoke with the mayor this morning about, were they in the document signed? The facts are that on September twenty first, two thousand twenty one. A ordinance was passed by this body, giving the mayor the authority up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for purchase of a caterpillar. Escavator. It was purchased through Caterpillar and the mayor. Got a quote the next day and he has a document here that was not in the package. It says it was signed September twenty second, twenty twenty one by the mayor. However, it's an amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand versus a hundred and fifteen thousand approved by the council. On December of the twenty third, the council repealed the expenditure that it previously had and there were. Additional documents signed on February twenty third and March twenty fourth. Lease purchase agreements that obligated the same hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And it currently, this is not budgeted. This original quote, this signed contract here is, it says a purchase order. And assigned was set for a hundred and twenty five thousand, which is above the amount that was approved by the city council. The original sales price is one thirteen, six thirty, six eighty eight. The after tax balance is one twenty five, but it is not charged tax. It charges a, a. What says a CSA agreement of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty one dollars and fifty two cents, seven, two hundred and fifty two dollars, seventy five cents, if I'm reading this correctly. And the ordinance that was passed, if I remember, I don't have it before me, but it authorized including incidentals up to a hundred and fifteen thousand. There is an issue with the excavator in that it has not been appropriated this year at all. I spoke with the city treasurer today and yesterday about, could he show me an appropriation for this amount? And so the budget currently doesn't appropriate, in, when I say this amount, I mean the amount of the finance agreement. The amount of finance agreement is probably two thousand dollars a month. Anyone in administration to my left could, could correct me on that. But it, uh, it's not been appropriated this year in the budget for city council. And so there were two instruments signed this year, one in February twenty third and one in March twenty fourth. To complete the purchase of the, of the excavator. And so, uh, but all of them were in the amount of one twenty five versus one fifteen. And the practical matter, the mayor did go and try to, to purchase it. The date when he had authority, he had authority from September twenty first through December the twenty second, when the council voted to repeal it. However, during those meetings, one meeting he was present, one meeting he was absent. This body asked this clerk whether it can be repealed on that time and the city clerk said, yes, it could be. The order could be canceled. I haven't had a chance to review this because it was given to me this morning as to compare it to the other documents. But the documents that I have, the only, the question I have from a legal standpoint. Is why would there be a need for other documents if this was the binding agreement on September twenty second, twenty twenty one? And I'm just saying off the top of my head as I read it now, it was emailed to me, I talked to the mayor post at. Eight forty five this morning, emailed to me at possibly nine thirty. And I've been in meetings and et cetera, hadn't had a chance to look at it since then. But he, he, he and I had a lengthy conversation about this and other issues on, on it. But on its face, it's above the amount the council approved. And then the other two documents on their face are above the amount that the council approved. The council did approve the purchase. Of one hundred and fifteen thousand. The course funds I received from September twenty second, twenty twenty one. The mayor was emailed a letter way in, he, it was said that the piece of equipment he wanted for one fifteen, they no longer had it. And that they were finding one that was possibly two thousand dollars cheaper. And that was a hundred and thirteen thousand with this does comport to that conversation that the mayor and the sales representative had. He was formed in that email that the equipment would be ready, November thirtieth and being ready November thirtieth, they could deliver it. There were no other documents that were signed at that point. And the document was signed in February of this year, February twenty two and March of twenty two. And the, the documents that they were speaking of were the ones that they were trying to bind. In those documents. The mayor states that the city council has approved it. At that time, there was an ordinance that had been repealed it. However, the mayor did not sign it and it was not published until. March the twentieth of twenty twenty two. The mayor signed on March, February twenty fourth of twenty twenty two. The express intent of the council was that it be repealed that, uh, in December. It would have gone into effect upon publication. And at the time, the, the city clerk, once he informed the city councils, they said that it would stop the process at that point. And the mayor raises the point that the city clerk didn't sign contracts. He signs contracts and he has whose authority to do so. So her comments to the council were immaterial in his opinion. And at this point, what we have is initial approved by the city council, initial. Order by the mayor. However, the binding documents weren't signed to this year. When I said a binding documents. This is like purchasing a car. We don't get the documents that we do the financing, et cetera. The financing was done in February and March of twenty twenty two. And all of it is slightly above what the city council approved, which was one hundred and fifteen thousand. This is one point five thousand. But at the time when we did the emergency order wedding, paying bidding, the mayor had told the council that everything would be a hundred and fifteen thousand below. And so that is the issue, what is, what the mayor was speaking of earlier is that the company says that if they do not make a payment. That the city does not make a payment, when I said they, I would mean the administration, then they're going to. Repossess the excavator today. And so that's why the mayor asked us to be added to the. Agenda to, for further discussion. But there's no appropriation this year. And there's a signed document by the mayor dated this year. There's a signed order for him dated last year at the time period that he had authority to do so.
And I, I would only add to that. The, the purchase order date signature. Obligates the city. And if you, if you want to couple that with the appropriations up to at least a hundred and fifteen thousand. At this point, in order to prevent it from being repossessed, we have to make a payment of eight thousand, almost nine thousand dollars. The, the project was appropriated in the year we obligated it. We just failed to pay it or do it, but that doesn't reflect on Caterpillar. It reflects on the city. I think it would be cleaner and, and be recommended to do this again. But I also don't think, you know, it changes the fact that it was obligated. It was obligated after it was properly appropriated. For additional amount, it sounds like in, in several thousand dollars, a few thousand dollars over the actual authorized amount. I did kind of recall, we talked about that later, but. That's, we don't have to talk about that now. We'll go back and look at those documents. But, uh, but nonetheless, we did obligate the city up to at least that hundred and fifteen thousand. And right now we need to make a payment of eight thousand. Ten odd dollars or prevent it from being, hey, we pay it, how we pay it, when we pay it, all the rest of those issues are important issues. But my immediate concern is that we pay them and, and avoid it being repossessed. Our citizens want to be used to cut these overhanging trees, the ditches, which is the, the original, most important purpose of the purchase to begin with. And so forth. I think they want us to do it. Y'all did do it, you know, approved it. Uh, and we ordered it. It was all done in compliance with the law. It was properly, properly done. It's just that we did not, we didn't do it. We didn't pay it. We didn't, we didn't honor it, but that doesn't keep us from being obligated. Because it is signed and that document is there and it was dated before it was unappropriated, so. All those other issues aren't Caterpillar's concern. They're our concern. We made an, I obligated the city act for let the. City council appropriated it and I felt legally allowed to do so. And that's the, that's the fact that matters. Now they want to repo it because we hadn't made a payment. I want us to make that payment. It's due today or they're going to repo it. The citizens don't want repo'd.
One of the issues, I don't have the back of this. I got the one side of it. The one issue is too, though, is that this actually was above what the council appropriated, this ten thousand dollar more than what you were authorized to spend at that point.
Well, and, and, but even if you go up to the authorized amount of what was a hundred and fifteen, that's most of it. And we're still obligated legally and what they're asking for is eight thousand, eight hundred, not a hundred and twenty five. So I think all the other issues are issues to be discussed. It'd be, it'd be better to clean this up in a way. In terms of appropriations, look at the issue of the one twenty five and finance agreements or whatever else you want to look at. But then for the day that, that, this, this, what faces the city today is repossession of that machine if we don't make a eight thousand, eight hundred, something like that payment. And clearly it was, it was legally authorized and appropriated and obligated by the city. And you've seen the email from the municipal that also quotes an attorney general's opinion that states we were obligated and can't unobligated at that point. So. Well, I'm asking you to, what I'm really asking, and this doesn't require a quorum in my opinion, because it's already been done. I'm just asking you to. Allow us to make eighty eight hundred payment without, without fear of, of criticism at this point, I guess. And I, in my opinion, this is already legal and it's illegal if we don't make it, which is why they can legally repo it.
Well, it's, it's, it's two things though, but this is above what the city council authorized. That's one. And then two, this is not the financing part, but this, this is a purchase order agreement, but. That's financing paperwork that wasn't signed until this, 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 uh, this year. The city council, if they're going to prove it, they need to, they need to make an appropriation related to it. This was four months later and. Madam clerk told the body several times that they had the right to counsel at some point. I don't see the backside of this, so I can't speak to what the backside says, because it says there are different terms on the backside of this document, but I only have the forward. I don't have the, the rear side of the document, so I cannot speak to what the rest of this says.
So you're saying that it was approved, signed, financed after the council had made a decision in December to rescind it?
The financing paperwork, they said as well as about repossession about the agreement decided this year. They didn't mention this agreement in September twenty twenty two, twenty twenty one. The paperwork, the city is approximately, according in their view, says they're three payments behind for a total of eight thousand something dollars. But this was referencing documents that were signed this year. That the financing documents, not, not this document, which is a purchase order. And I need to read the other side of the page. I'm not trying to be unclear or evasive in that. I'm just telling you, I have one, one side of a document. I don't have the whole document.
And there's some, you know, there's some discussion about the date of the finance agreement and, and when the ornaments of unfunding it. Actually went into effect, but my point today is just this, that the, the document in front of you shows clearly. The city of Allen West Town is obligated to pay at least up to a one fifteen because that's what was authorized appropriate. It was authorized and appropriated. We just didn't do it. We could write them a check right now for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And, and it would be, and it would be hard to argue that we, that we shouldn't have to do that if you're not going to. Honor the finance agreement. My guess is that's what they'll ask for next, but right now they're asking for. The eighty eight hundred dollar payment in order to keep it from being repossessed. All I'm saying is, the, the smartest thing to do would be to pay, my judgment, is to pay the eighty eight hundred dollars. We at least owe them that much. That document makes it clear. That we're committed. And the appropriations, all of that was done appropriately. Though it's, it's very, I mean, the finance agreement is, is, is one issue. It's, it's important. But what faces us is they're going to take that equipment back today if we don't pay them eighty eight hundred, whatever it is. We clearly have obligated the city for that and we clearly should pay it. And it's also not in our interest to let it be repossessed for a lot of reasons, but mostly because our citizens want to see us using it.
In further reading, I see the terms of this. The second paragraph of the agreement said payment terms. It says, one, there's financial services, CSC or lease, first installment due, none of this filled out. This agreement says it will be paid a hundred and twenty five thousand, six hundred and thirty two dollars and forty five cent in cash. So this, this agreement was for cash payment. This purchase order with cash, it was not financial agreement. So the documents that they're referring to is not this one, because this one's for cash only. There's no.
So in other words, if we don't, if we don't honor the finance agreement that we signed, then they're going to ask us to pay it in full. And, and my, well, sure, that's what, that's what it says. I've obligated the city based on what the city council.
No, sir. What, what this is saying is that in this document, you're saying that you're going to pay cash at that point. It was not tendered at that point. And at the bottom it said notes, it says to hold and then it's something illegible. It says it looked like a hole in teal or something.
All I'm saying is the finance agreement is how to pay it, not whether to pay it. If we're not going to pay it with the finance agreement or honor that, then they're going to come back and ask for the full amount and it'd be in their route, right to do so. I don't think it's in our interest to do it. We just need to make the payment. And whatever you recommend, as far as the rest of it, I'm probably okay with, but, but in the meantime, if they repossess it. And then they come after, we, they could repossess this, repossess this machine. Take the. Reduce the amount by how much we've used it, how many hours we've used it, depreciate it. And come after us for the remainder balance, which would probably be way more than eighty eight hundred dollars anyway. And then we don't even have a machine, so. As, as I'm, I'm saying to you, as CEO of this city, it would be a. It would be a folly of the highest order not to make this payment today and let that machine return. We're going to owe it anyway. The finance agreement is also probably legal, but even if it weren't, uh, it, it's still going to be obligated and we'll have to find a way to pay it. All the other issues are, are interesting, but, but they don't change those hard facts.
Was, was the equipment delivered in twenty twenty one?
I'm not exactly sure when it was delivered.
Okay, so the equipment was not delivered in February in the time period before the ordinance were peeling it. And so at the point you had this agreement that you would pay them cash for, and then that agreement would appeal before they deliver. So.
Wait a minute, I have, uh, attorney general's opinion and municipal opinion that says it only has to be obligated by the city. And it was obligated and that's that document that obligates us. Well, before it was unappropriated, it would be illegal not to honor this.
No, 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 that, for the sake of people that, that's listening. What the town general opinion says is the, the Arkansas law says this, that the governing body can, uh, amend the budget at any time, so long as it's not prejudicial to someone else. And then amend the budget, if there's a previous obligation, then you still need to honor. And so that's turning, turns the opinion to that effect. Here will be head on September twenty first, this council authorized, and September twenty second, the mayor says, hey, uh, I'm getting a call from you, I want to do a purchase order, and I want to pay you cash. The cash payment did not happen. And the cash payment did not happen, equipment was not delivered. In December, the, the city council repealed it, the equipment had yet to be delivered when they repealed it. In February of this year, they deliver it and the mayor does a lease after the council's already voted to term it to, uh, repeal, uh, the purchase. And so the lease that they're relying on, the lease purchase they're relying on, this in February twenty twenty two, which is after the repeal. There was never a cash agreement, so there's been a change in the terms of the purchase.
Is that not a cash agreement in front of you?
This cash agreement, did you pay them cash? Did they deliver it in twenty twenty one?
They're going to demand it if we don't honor the finance agreement, what they agreed to is the finance agreement. And, and if we, if you want to argue about the finance agreement, that's fine. All I'm saying is that we obligated the city. Also, when, when it was unappropriated, I wrote an email, because this was not the only item that y'all appropriated and then unappropriated. And I asked the municipal league for their legal opinion on, at what point is, is it? What point does the city get obligated to the point where you can't unappropriate something? You, you have to honor the obligation and their answer, which I distributed at the last meeting. Was that when it's, when the city is committed and, and, and it's ordered. And, uh, and then they also cited attorney general opinion. So the only thing that had been ordered at that point and legally committed is what's before you. The rest of the equipment that got unappropriated, you know, I, I dropped it because y'all unappropriated it. But this equipment had already been legally obligated and according to municipal league, we couldn't get out from under that obligation. So you're talking about how to pay it, I'm talking about whether we owe it or not. We owe it, we obligated it, I obligated it, it's based on, uh, my understanding of what, of what was done in the council meeting.
The, the, the city did not owe it because the city, they didn't deliver it this time, this contract was at that time for cash purchase. Obviously, they didn't acknowledge it because the letter that they're sending is in February, it's about February and March of this year's lease purchase agreements. And that was, those were executed well after, uh, all of this. This is no more than you getting a quote from a car lot and then not purchasing it.
That's a purchase order, that's a purchase order, not a quote, and I signed it.
Did they deliver?
They delivered it.
Did they live on this cash, did they give, did they ask you for cash on that day?
What was the finance? We, we just, we.
March twenty fourth of twenty twenty two.
We worked out a way to pay it later, a different way to pay it than in that purchase order. But all that means is that it falls to the purchase order if you don't want to honor the finance agreement. Then we have to come up with the full amount and it was delivered and it has been used. So at this point, and this, and, and in my opinion, uh, my whole opinion, our citizens want us to have it and want us to use it. And I can tell you for sure that we need it. We need about three or four of them while working at the same time, but we can't afford. But we're lucky to have this one, we're about to lose it today if we don't make a payment for eighty eight hundred dollars or whatever, eight, eight thousand something. The, the other details about the finance agreement, the legal issues about the finance agreement, I'm open to listening about that as far as I'm concerned, or getting other opinions or whatever y'all want to do. But in the meantime, that purchase order clearly demonstrates and Caterpillar clearly believes that we are obligated legally to pay for this equipment, which we have already been using. And.
Was Caterpillar informed to deliver the ordinance repealing?
They fulfilled their commitment, they're asking us to fulfill our commitment.
That wasn't what I.
Which was legally made and legally tendered and promised and obligated, and that document is the documentation that demonstrates it.
As part of the purchase order lease, uh, part of the lease agreement, the lease agreement that I read said we had proof that the council had approved. And provide proof that the council proved that you also give them the fact that the council, uh, repealed it in December. Because the document was signed in February and March of twenty twenty two, that's what I'm asking, where they made aware of that before executing the lease purchase agreement that.
I just, we sent them whatever they asked for, that's all I remember. But the finance agreement was how to pay it and, and instead of paying it in full. And, and the real issue there was, um, we had the money payment for, if we'd wanted, we could have.
Now, what the mayor, what the mayor said earlier also is, for those of you who are listening, he discussed what's called a deficiency judgment. A deficiency judgment is when a, a vehicle or equipment is purchased, you fail to make the purchase. According to their agreement, they can repossess and sell it to a third party and they come after the sign of the agreement. For anything that's, uh, less than the purchase amount, so if they took this equipment, sold it, and they only sold it for fifty thousand. Uh, under their contract, what they'd be saying is city, you still owe us seventy five thousand dollars, even though a third party is using this equipment. That's what's called a deficiency agreement, it happens all the time when people's cars are repossessed and they get sued for deficiency judgment. The issue that they still would have to prove is that the, the contract was binding and the mayor had actual authority when he signed the, signed the agreement. This would put, uh, the mayor and the city in an adversarial position if the council didn't approve it. And what I mean by that is this, when it's sued, the issue becomes, I've devised many times, the city, the city has a position, the mayor has a position. The mayor would say he had authority to do so, he ordered it, the city council would say, I, he, he did not have the authority to do so. And that he should be held personally liable for not paying it. And so you'll have a situation where, uh, the city's going to be paying for two lawyers, uh, about this issue.
Or we could just make the payment today, keep it and then.
I was, I was just, I was speaking about the deficiency, not practically what happened.
But that is the practical reality of it, and in my opinion, you've already approved it, we're already legally obligated according to municipal opinion, or what I, how I understand it, I do opinion anyway. We can't get out from under it and we've used it and it's due today or they're going to come get it, it's just a pretty hard fact of life. And if you sold a car to somebody and you signed it and they signed a purchase order and you signed that purchase order and it was for five thousand dollars. And they take your car and they wreck it or they drive it or they do anything to it at all, then they don't pay you. You're going to go get the car and you're going to be pretty upset when you find out you can't drive it and what they've done to it. And that's, that's a very clear and simple issue. And we signed it, I signed the purchase order on behalf of the city after the council appropriated the money. The, the additional amount, I, I think we talked about it at a later meeting. But the bottom line is the city was committed up to a hundred and twenty five, the city appropriated up to a hundred and fifteen. We're obligated up to at least a hundred and fifteen and this is eight thousand something payment in order to keep it. The smart thing to do would be, in my opinion, uh, at this point, regardless of how you feel about it. Would be to appropriate it again, authorize it again, approve the finance agreement again, or whatever else you want to do. But if, none of that's going to change what faces us today. We don't need a quorum, we don't need a, uh, we don't need to do anything, we just need to honor the obligation we've already made. In order to keep it, and I'm, uh, bringing it up to you because of, in the interest of transparency. And so that our other administrative or, or executive officers can hear what you think. But it's mine contention that if we don't pay it, we're going to be exposing the city and putting ourselves in a really bad spot.
I'm sorry, you said we don't need a quorum, don't need a quorum to do what?
To make a payment on something we've already had a quorum and approved to do.
So yeah. There's no quorum for us to take action at, at, at this meeting. I mean, we're.
I'm just saying, we don't need, we don't need it to take action because this is already.
So you're not asking, you're not, you're not asking the city council to do anything?
I'm really not, I'm asking for your input and in the interest of. Of the other people that sign the checks, I want them to hear from me, but the document is clear, we're, we're obligated to pay it. And there is a legal obligation and a legal consequences if we don't pay it at this point.
My, my input is the same that it has been. I guess for a number of years now that I've sat at this table. I have no idea why mayors go out and do things that they don't have authority to do and then, and then come back and ask for approval after the fact. Or why anyone will put themselves in the position that you put yourself in. Except that I'm not in your chair, but if I were in your chair, I would come here and ask for something and the city council said, no, I will move on to the next thing. And we repeatedly go through this process of debate about whether I had authority, I didn't have authority. Either you expressly have it or you don't. And this convoluted conversation, I know it sounds convoluted to people listening, it's not convoluted at all. A cash purchase is a cash purchase, it's consummated when the goods are delivered and the cash is exchanged. If it didn't happen, it didn't happen, so in September, there was no agreement. There was some paperwork that says I'm going to give you some cash for a piece of equipment, but it didn't happen, so there's no agreement. It's not binding because it says you're going to give me cash and I'm going to give you a product. There was no cash presented, there was no product presented, there was no agreement. The financing paperwork is the one that matters, that's the one that they're going to act on. We talk about deficiencies and all that stuff, if they file suits based on that, or repossesses based on that financing contract. That's the one that was signed in March and that's the one that there was clearly no authority to sign. However. If you feel like you can do whatever you need to do without, well, you don't have council approval and there's not a quorum, so we can't take any action, so my own input is simple. People shouldn't place themselves, and there's no way I would go out and obligate myself to a debt without approval. It just makes no sense to me, it's not my money. If, if I can't get it here at the table, then it just doesn't happen. I tell the citizens, look, I, I tried and they didn't want to do it and we move on to the next thing. I just, I, I, it baffles me is the why we keep having stuff done behind closed doors and around the corner. And, and it doesn't, just present it, it gets a vote up or down and move on to the next issue, but that's my input.
Mr. O, on September twenty first, twenty twenty one. The city council approved an appropriation. He's, and, and waived the bidding, uh, suspended the rules, waived the bidding and approved the expenditure. Mr. Valley says of up to a hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand for this equipment. On September twenty second, I ordered the equipment based upon your approval. When you add taxes, it went over a hundred and fifteen thousand, it sounds like, that's what happened. I believe we talked about that at a later meeting. But, um, the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of that was absolutely approved prior to me ordering it. And we're obligated legally to pay up to that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars because I obligated this on that purchase order. And we do have it and we are using it, the citizens want it, I would ask you to do what's in the best interest of the citizenry on any of it. But the simple facts of the matter are the city council did approve it, authorized it. And authorized the, the bidding and then I ordered it the next day on September twenty second. And I signed the order and they ordered it. It's pretty, it is not really convoluted at all, it's very simple, we, we ordered it and we owe, we owe it.
Well, if, if the purchase order creates an obligation based on the order, then it would say it in the purchase order. And only half of the purchase order has been presented because it has language that says something about the reverse side. And if it says that on the reverse side, it says that on the reverse side, but who knows what the reverse side says at this point because it hasn't been presented. But if the purchase order says your order obligates you to act on this, then it does. That's not what you presented, that's not what it says. It presents a set of facts that were not, not, not followed. There was no cash purchase, there was no equipment exchange. In fact, the, the facts are that the equipment arrived in February and the contract was signed in March. And that the appropriation was repealed in, on or about December. And so simply saying I ordered it only matters if the order creates an obligation, a legal obligation.
All I'm telling you is that municipal league information I handed out the last meeting said that it did. And, and I, and we're obligated, period.
Well, the question is always, what was the municipal league presented with, because I can only give.
Ordered, committed the city to order it, is, can you unappropriate it?
Uh, no, 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 because there, there's documents, there's documents, there's facts. And the question is always, what is the, if a person is given a legal opinion, what were, what information did you give them? What facts did you give them? And do they have all information to make a decision, because your decision is only going to be as good as the information that you.
I've been in this meeting several times when I've been advised that my verbal commitment is a contract. That was also given, but it's also followed up by documentation. And while you don't have the flip side of that, that document, I'm sure we can get it. There isn't anything at all that indicates that the flip side is going to somehow make an exception for us. It's, well, it's, it's a purchase order, I'm committing the city to buy it, but on the flip side, it's going to say, but not really. Is that what you're saying, it's going to say, no, not really, this purchase order doesn't really mean anything, is that what it's going to say on the back?
No, it, it doesn't say on the, it doesn't say on the front side that you obligated, that's what I'm telling you.
It's this purchase order.
Okay, so, so a contract, a contract can be written or if it's written, then it supersedes any, any conversation that anybody had. So what that means is when you read the four corners of the document that you presented, it makes no absolute obligation whatsoever, it does not.
So even though Caterpillar requires that before they spend a hundred and twenty something thousand dollars to order the equipment on our behalf. That they think that purchase order is not a legal document or a commitment by our city, they're going to go out on a limb?
They may, I don't care what they think, the question is, does it legally create an obligation? The obligation that they're going to sue on is not that, it's a finance, that's the one that they're going to sue on. That's the one that they value, they don't value that, they value the financing document, the one that was signed in March.
That's what you're saying, Mr. O, but that's not what you're telling me. And the facts, the, the, the bottom line, the practical matter is they're going, they're going to repo it and take it back, the citizens want it, the city needs it. And y'all did appropriate the money, you did have the intent of buying it. And it wasn't unappropriated until three months later when you wanted to use that money for another purpose. By then it was clearly committed and too late to unappropriate that, but not the rest of it. And so we didn't order the rest of it. This one, one piece of equipment is different, and if we, if we don't write that check today, we're going to, they're going to repo that equipment and we'll probably still owe money. For something we're not even getting able to use.
If what you're saying is right, then there's no need for us to have this conversation. I, I've said, I've said, I've said this before. I've said this before. If you believe in what you're saying, then act on it.
But I, I disagree, I agree with what Esther said earlier. This was for a cash purchase and it was above the amount of fruit, so the purchase order in and of itself is faulty. Because you cannot spend one penny above what was appropriate, I don't think appropriate, it was a hundred and fifteen thousand, it's a hundred and twenty five thousand. And so you went beyond that. Even so, this is a cash contract, but this is where you're going to pay cash immediately. There's nothing this year that's, that gives you authority to sign the lease purchase agreement. And lease purchase agreement wasn't signed after the repeal, and you had obligation to tell them this council repealed this. But as relates to it.
We obligated the city up to a hundred and fifteen thousand cash, if we don't honor the rest of those agreements for the reasons you give, it's just going to default back on this. We've used it, I'm, I'm going to ask our other off, officers to, to co-sign it and approve the transaction to keep us. From exposing ourselves to the situation where they repo the equipment, we don't have it and yet we still have to pay for it.
As, as it relates to it, I, I disagree with the mayor saying, here's the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
In it. Issue in it, the city has used this, has had it for X amount of time and has used it or something. At, at some point, at, at a minimum, where you agree with the contract or not, we're still gonna refute the contract, we gotta pay for the usage of it, regardless. Regardless, even if you've written it, you gotta pay for that. I don't know how much it would be the cost of rent for the ninety days, but you gotta at least pay for, for their usage regardless. But we don't have a quorum at this point, but the other thing was after you last council member left here, but you have no authority to do anything. But the mayor, uh, this time, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful this time, but the mayor has document for you, they need some direction to go forward. We had a quorum earlier when Franklin left, the others, the others who said they could be here didn't come. And you have a big hole over there on Oakland Street that has to be fixed. It's clear at this point, he's gonna go over five thousand dollars. Clear at this point, the state wants that hole fixed.
I mean, there's no. At this point, we're all just talking, so.
I'm sorry.
I have a responsibility, Mr. Ove, for the city when it comes to the state highway department, and we've closed one of the highways down for two weeks now. And we could, we actually, if I hadn't, I hadn't put this on the agenda and just did this yesterday, we probably have it fixed by now and we'd have it reopened in the morning. But I wanted to bring it up at this meeting because it indicated that we might go over five. Now we don't have a quorum, we can't do it. But I'm still under a stated obligation on behalf of the city to get this done. So, I mean, any input you have is, is.
And the minister, the mayor presented these, each one of these was total over five thousand dollars. We did not have a quorum to approve it. But also note that there's a hole in the middle of the state highway. And the state has informed the city that they must, uh, close that hole immediately. It can't be closed without the repair. Those are the facts as, as they are presented. Will you so note that, please?
Yes, we'll do.
Those are facts that they presented, and, and so at this point, on, on these issues, I've adopted by the pros and cons on the contract as well as on the others. And you all have to decide whether you feel comfortable signing these. I can't inform you, go ahead and sign. Cause he has restrictions under law relating to these, it's over five thousand dollars. But also, the water has to be on, it's public utility. He attempted, made the best effort to, to get the council to approve it. At this point, something has to be done. Unless there's gonna be another meeting today, uh, the state highway wants to finish and it's been open for at least ten days. As relates to really, at, at, at some point, what I need to just call that attorney, at some point, we owe him something for, even for the rental. How much is the rental for? For, uh, ninety days?
I'm very close with these purchases, I mean, a little more.
Cause as long as, as long as they're, the cities, with the city using, the city gonna be obligated for rental.
On our big equipment that we've had at the landfill, when we've had to rent something, it's been as much as two to three thousand a month for the big pieces of equipment up here.
I'm sorry.
Which would put us over the eight thousand. Is there any reason you think legally that we would be if we might? Is, is there any reason I can't approve the payment of eighty eight hundred dollars today to keep the machine until the rest of it's resolved?
I fully acknowledge that it will be reversed and it will be at the physical address soon against the city. I cannot tell you legally whether we were winning or not. I believe we have some strong defenses to it. The flip side, even if you defend and win that lawsuit, uh, the, the question is, this question for the treasurer, is there anything in the budget for rental? Because at a minimum, every time we've used it, we, we, we can't just use people's equipment without paying.
You asked me if. After this particular piece of equipment, not prepared the budget, my understanding was as of December twenty first, that the city council had repealed the appropriations, so I wouldn't think to put appropriations for the next year, the city council said that they're taking it back. Uh, at that point in time, I didn't know that the equipment had been ordered. I didn't know that there was a, a purchase order. If I had known that there had been a purchase order, I may have included it in the appropriations, but since I, I wasn't aware that there was even a purchase order, the last thing I knew was that the city council had repealed it. And so I didn't consider putting it in, and I wouldn't consider putting in a rental, not even knowing that we would have the equipment. The equipment didn't come till February.
Do we have any money in the budget though for rental equipment?
I think, I think we do. I don't know exactly how much it is and what department it is, but I'm thinking somewhere in one of the budgets, there is an appropriation for, for equipment rental.
That might be a two-part solution. The rest of that's.
But, but that's not what they're, but they're, they aren't asking for a payment for rental. They're asking for, they're asking for a finance payment.
Yeah, they can do that. They'll, they'll, they'll be fine. Here, here the practical problem. Here's a practical problem, man. As the mayor, you're CEO of the city. Been CEO of the city. Either you have actual authority, implied authority, apparent authority, and dealing with third parties. Your actual authority is based on the ordinances. The practical problem that we have at this point is a third party believed that you had authority to, to sign those contracts. And it is a, a major issue, and the issue is for you, is it's not appropriated. Issue for you is that, uh, it was repealed. The issue for the city, a third party suing would say, that ain't my problem. I got a document signed by your mayor, obligating you and you using my equipment. So he had the apparent authority. So it's an odd issue and it's issue relating to uh, some may perceive to be a crime. I'm not saying it is, I'm not saying that. I'm saying legally, what the council would be arguing is your acts of ultra virus. Ultra virus acts mean they go, oh, be on your authority. You had no authority to do what you were doing. And that would be the legal defense we have. You'll be up to a judge to do it, but Caterpillar's opinion would be, we don't care if he had actual authority. Uh, he either had implied authority or apparent authority, he would never sign these documents. If he's signing documents, the mayor, he's buying into this and we all use our equipment and we want our money. And so that's, that's what we are. And again, I am not implying that you've done anything criminal. I'm not saying that. I was saying, just legal fact what people argue, that's all I'm saying. Uh, but at this point, if I'm a caterpillar, I say you have a parent authority, you sign these documents, you obligated the city, and that they're gonna sue, repossess, and do other things. The practical problem, as I said earlier, is the deficiency judgment. Because they could take it and give it to somebody else and we still had to pay for it if court orders to pay for it. Somebody else be using equipment, doing everything, and the city still be paying for it. Uh, and so that, those are the risks that we run and not making a payment.
Excuse me, but as city clerk, and I'm not speaking for the treasurer or the mayor, my concern is when they repossess equipment and then we try to go out and finance anything else, police cars, fire trucks, or anything else, how's a repossession gonna affect us?
Repossession is gonna affect you and get equipment for anybody. It's just like an individual. Corporate, they would, you would, you would have a bad night. Uh, the city, someone would have a bad night. And so all of this reflects on whether the mayor had actual, apparent, or implied authority to do so. And to this day, that there's a violation, that he had no authority, no appropriation, then that's beyond all of us in the sense of, of that.
Now, now let me just say one thing for the public's part one, and for Caterpillar. Caterpillar wouldn't have done it. The, the documents that they asked for were the documents you're talking about that demonstrates that I did have the authority. They insisted on those in addition to my signature. So Caterpillar, uh, had all the documentation in place uh, to, to protect that question of whether I had the legal authority to do it, and also uh, a few other documents about our city. So, I mean, I, 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 I agree with what you're saying. But again, the city council appropriated it, authorized it, suspended the rules to, 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 to get this from Caterpillar. And a hundred and twenty five is, is ten thousand more than a hundred and fifteen. But we at least obligated this to the hundred and fifteen, and I'm not exactly sure what the other two thousand is for, going back that far, but but we are still, in my judgment, obligated it, and it was appropriately authorized. So it's not just me, the question is, is the city period, it's the council authorized it. The city council obligated it or not. And it's, it, in my opinion, that document demonstrates that we did. So it's not just me, and it's the whole city, and it is our reputation, and it is the built. We use Caterpillar as one of our major vendors for heavy equipment, and it wired us with other vendors as well.
Here, here's the practical issue. As a lawyer, I cannot advise you to sign, to violate the law in the sense that there's zero dollars appropriated for it. Also, because of the situation, that's, that's why mayors and councils have to work together because of this situation. The practical problem is, uh, if you don't make the payment at this point, there are major consequences. If you do make the payment at this point, each one of you run the risk of there had been appropriation and et cetera. And so that's, that's just where we are at this point. We can, city council and approached anything, appropriate a die. Uh, there was apparent authority when the mayor did get through the purchase order, there was actual authority, September twenty second, twenty twenty one, for a cash purchase. At the time, uh, I must make this clear for the public, at the time, everybody said, but new would be a cash purchase. Because the American Rescue Act was cash purchase. Uh, the, the lease purchase was never anticipated September twenty first, twenty twenty one, when the council waived, prepared a bidding. The lease purchase agreement was done later. It would have been best for the mayor to come back at the point to say, hey, we already obligated it, we didn't have the cash, let's do it the way, but he didn't do it. He signed it based on.
But I'm not sure I didn't come back. All I was trying to do is provide. I'm, I'm, I know what you said. I'm still not sure we didn't. I haven't researched the finance agreement, just the obligation, the original obligation of the city, according to what the municipal league told me obligated us. And that's the document that did it. Now, how we pay it and what we did later and all those other issues. I didn't research what, what we did or didn't do as far as bringing things back. I kinda remember at least on a few occasions coming back and saying, well, you know, these, it turned out to be ten thousand more than what we thought it was at the meeting, and y'all suspended the rules and so forth. I, I feel like we might have done that for this, I don't remember, I didn't go researching all the minutes and look at all the meetings. I was just concerned about the dates. September twenty first, council approved it. September twenty second, I believe it was, I ordered it, signed that document. And then December something was when it was unappropriated. So I asked the council, I mean, I asked the municipal league, and this, and that was their opinion, that that was the one piece of equipment that could not be unappropriated. And so we went through with it, the rest of it was about how to pay it, lease purchase versus other options. And we can go research all that too, but anyway, all I'm saying, you're, you're right. My question is, do we have the nine thousand dollars in our budget to make this payment while we work out these other things?
The, the amount, I mean, this, to me, it doesn't, if we have it or not, doesn't matter. At the treasurer, I'm supposed to make sure I'll pay myself a lawful. I just wanna know if this would be a lawful, authorized payment. We can work out, we can get money from a different fund, we, we can find the money to pay for it, to eight thousand dollars. My only concern is if this is a lawful payment, if it's authorized and if it's lawful. If it's lawful and it's authorized, we have no, no problem paying it.
The issue I said, the, the.
And I depend on.
Till this year.
But I depend on the city attorneys.
These papers not to this year. And so at least, the lease contract does not approve, the cash only payment was approved back then. And but, um, it was not set aside and paid at that point. That's, that's where the, the lease payment that, that, that won't pay anymore. Again, it's a practical problem. Is Riggs and Caterpillar, who financed this, uh, regardless of what the city says, gonna say that, that the city had, the mayor had either parent, actual, implied authority to sign it, uh, based on his signature on it. And, uh, they financed.
Uh, is it possible to send them the payment for nine thousand dollars with a stipulation that this is for what we're, what, what we're told we owe on equipment at this time, or we're looking at the legal consequences of the, the finance agreement and other related matters, but we wanna make sure that we're current in the meantime, some, some of that effect.
Now, without appropriation.
Well, I mean, out of a fund that has been appropriated for, for leases and rents. Cause we leasing around others, but.
Are we current on all the other payments for Caterpillar?
Yes. Okay, the thing is, okay, so in the appropriations, when I came up with the budget, I knew the equipment that we had, right? So just say, uh, the landfill, we have a, uh, dump truck. And so we appropriated so much this year for that dump truck. So the appropriations say, uh, ninety six thousand dollars was half this year, so we have forty five thousand dollars in appropriations for lease payments. But those lease payments were for that dump truck, so I don't know if you can use, if you wanna use those appropriations, and then you may go over the appropriations. If the county, city council says, you know, but there are appropriations for lease payments. But they're, they're for specific items already. So, so there, there is a land item for, for lease purchase, and there are appropriations. I mean, at this point, we're just.
I mean, the answer is. The answer is gonna determine where they pick it up, take it. Since it really comes down to.
I mean, are they gonna pick it up today? I mean, are they sitting there waiting on it and saying? Just the deadline today.
Fifteen minutes from now. And I've been very good about extending.
I mean, like I said, my, my, my opinion is, I'm, I'm just gonna defer to the city attorney's judgment and his advice.
Okay, well, I can you know this time, cause I need to look at some more documents relating to it. I need to see the back of this document and see those, because the issue is just simply, I don't know what the backside of this document says. I know that you, you said you paid cash then. At the time, the contract was for the American Rescue Act, but again, it was one of fifteen versus one twenty five. We never came back and addressed the issue. I was not aware of the one twenty five. In fact, I wasn't aware of the February contract or the March contract. Until we got the letter.
Is there any way we can talk to Caterpillar, Cater- Caterpillar or Riggs and say, hey, we didn't have a quorum? Can you give us a couple more days until we can have a meeting with all the city council members available, so we can come to a definite answer? Is there any way we can contact them to see if they can give us a few, a few more days?
We can do that in just a minute, but all of us still here.
Cause that, I mean, I'd like to do that. I mean, if, if they're reasonable and, and, and we really are trying to, uh, solve this problem. We're serious about solving the problem and just, just try to see if they'll give us a few more days.
I mean, because I would do whatever it took to get a hundred, a hundred and twenty five thousand. Mr. Monday, I believe we've concluded all of. All of the, the business for the, for, for the day. We'll just have an open discussion. Um, with everyone's on the council member still here. May as relates to the, to the street, I can't tell you that you fix it. You fix it, but at the same time, you're aware of everything that, uh, you have to get done on Oakland Street. Let's stay, let's stay mostly done. Yes, sir.
Mr. Jeff Carson has a question.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
When I say all this, I mean, the Oakland Street repair, the big open hole.
Total, total.
It's up to seventeen. It's up to seventeen thousand, not including the asphalt. And we've been.
We could do that.
They can do the asphalt, but we don't know what the asphalt's gonna cost. Because we don't know how much it's gonna take.
Well, we, we can turn coal mix into hot asphalt with that machine.
The, the practical part of the balance you have is this, you had a restriction of five thousand dollars. You have an obligation as a public utility to make sure water is there.
The water is there.
And to make sure that, but the state also wants to make sure you close in that hole. So I can't tell you to violate the city ordinance, but I can't tell you the other factors that you're dealing with.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Um, but this is what I don't understand. Uh, I know we need a quorum to, uh, come to, uh, this body of people. To ask them to appropriate the funds to fix this. Uh, we needed seven hundred dollars yesterday for gravel. So that we could pour concrete today, this morning. But we couldn't get, now, the state has been very lenient with us about this hole. But I mean, sooner or later, you know. It's gonna run out, just like, you know, my position ran out. You know, and the state come down here.
Remember what the daily fine is if we don't meet their deadlines?
I, I, you know, I talked to Josh, uh, yesterday morning. And I, I didn't specifically ask him, you know, what their fines would be daily. You know, because, you know, they are trying to work with us because they know, you know, the severity of that. You know, we have to put in another drain, city drain. We gotta put in, uh, sand, gravel, so many feet. And then we got to put in a special mix with a fiber in, in the concrete and re-bond. Because it's a state highway. You know, it's just not regular concrete.
I have a question.
Yes.
As, as I drive through there every day, you know, I remember my first couple of days going, wonder how much that's costing.
What?
That hole in the street. I, I, I mean, as I drive around and every day, I look at it and say, I wonder how much that's costing.
Well, uh, like I said, I talked to Josh, but.
But, but he, he, here's the question. Was there a projected cost to this project in the beginning?
No, sir. You, you don't know what anything is gonna cost until you dig it up and see what the problem, see what you gotta do to fix it.
But it's been going on for how many days?
It's about two weeks now.
About two weeks now, right? At some point, we, did we know what we at least had spent in the review? And what we might need to spend tomorrow, or are we just?
Well, really, uh, the city hasn't spent anything, uh, but, um. I had to get Mr. Garrison to make a clamp for that because the, one, the valve is so old. And two, uh, the pipe that's going into the valve had lead around to seal it. And with this drain collapsing the way it did, it caused the concrete under the road to collapse and hit this pipe.
So. He, this, let me, let me try and make this as simple as possible, because what I'm not understanding. Is how I can look at it and see and say, that's gotta cost more than five thousand dollars. I mean, just looking at it, I said, that's gotta cost more than five thousand dollars. We've met twice. Since that hole has been open. Council has met twice. When, when, when I was in college, there was this lady, what was it? She in the. In the treasurer's office, right? You had to go there when you couldn't pay your tuition and they might be canceling your class. We know we spent some days in that off. And she had a sign behind her desk that said, poor planning on your part does not necessitate an emergency on my part. And as I drive through, I keep saying, it's gotta cost more than five thousand dollars. I wonder when we'll find out. And on Friday, it's an emergency. And I'm going, if I can look at it and see it. Why has nobody just come to a council meeting and said, well, you just approved X amount of dollars in case, it just, it, it doesn't make me understand. Because maybe I just don't understand. And I, yeah, go ahead.
If, if it was just a cracking pipe and all we had to do was dig down, wrap a clamp on it and fill it back up. And pour a layer of concrete, it would have never exceeded five thousand dollars. But because of the storm drain doing what it did to all the damage. Which we didn't know, and the reason it become an emergency right away was that there was a hole actually in the road. That nobody knew, the street, the state called us, and when we seen the water, we didn't know the valve was that thing. We didn't know what that, we just thought. Normal hole and pipe, dig up, put a clamp on it, build a hole up, get out. But when we dug down there, it was worse than scenario, something that you will run into one in a thousand. Then, as we kept going, it just continued to get worse.
But, and, and here's my point, because just looking at a hole in the street, no, I don't think five thousand dollars. It became a time issue. Day after, day after, day after, day. I'm saying, I'm seeing the same people at the same spot, a lot of people, a lot of equipment at the same.
Well, that's what happened. It was trying to figure out how we could build that part. Part still wasn't going to necessarily exceed five thousand. But as we were finishing that part, then we realized. Well, wait a minute, now this storm drain over here is what caused all this to begin with. That's when it become a bigger issue.
It took three days to build the clamp to sit.
Right, for the first couple of days, none of that was even a thought, because the clamp had to be special made. There were so, there were so many beams. Normally, what we would do in that situation would be cut the line off, cut the valve out. Put a new piece of pipe. Well, what happened when we couldn't shut the water off to that area to cut it off? We went to the next step and that was just having to ready to build that little part, which that was not going to exceed. We knew, we knew that was not going to exceed five thousand. But when that part was built, then we started noticing as the water was running out. I was leaking on our park, because it was like, well, wait a minute, we can't back this, because if this water is still leaking out this hole, you, you know, when you drove by. You notice it wasn't filling up and going out. But that's when we realized that the water was running somewhere else. Well, as we got to looking, there's a storm drain opened up, which allowed it all to wash out and stuff, all of a sudden. That's when it become a bigger problem, more concrete, more everywhere.
And, and, and the short answer is, how many times did I let y'all know? And how many times do you answer? Let me know when you think this is gonna go over five, or it's about to, or in jeopardy. And for the first week, uh, as it was said here, it didn't look like it was gonna go over five because. The extent of the damage and the repair costs weren't gonna exceed five. Uh, yesterday, I think, is when y'all told me it, it looks like it's now about to go over five, and that's why we added it. And it is not my emergency, it is the public's emergency. And what's an emergent issue is that. The, uh, water department hasn't paid the, the bill to the vendor for the rock. It is a state specified specification of highway. It has to be built state specs so trucks don't fall in when they hit that spot. The city is responsible and on the hook for doing it. So how many times did I ask y'all? Let me know. Yeah, and y'all didn't, and y'all said, boy, but right now, it doesn't look like it's gonna get over five, until yesterday.
You said, why didn't you plan to begin with? What happened? We got called on Thursday. For that, there was a hole in the road. You could tell there was nothing under it, so sooner or later, somebody was fixing to have a car fall off. I guess then y'all might have could have said, well, let's plan for how we're gonna attack this problem. I mean, just in case it's over five thousand. But the state was looking at it like, hey, y'all got home road, this water rush, y'all, now. And we just thought, okay, like everything, that's a quick little fix. I mean, I guess y'all could have had a meeting addressed before, just in case. But we just did what we did, we go and start trying to fix.
And I'm, I'm looking not just at this, I'm looking down the road. If, see, because I turned out to be right, right? Me in, in apparent abundance of ignorance, just looking at what I see, I was right. I was right. And the thing, the issue is, if we gotta keep asking this question, are we gonna hit five thousand? Then why not just get the approval to go over five thousand? You see what I'm saying? It would have been so simple to say, I gotta ask this question repeatedly. Will we hit five? Will we hit five? Why not just go ahead and get the approval in case it goes over five?
We tried to do that and we couldn't get a quorum.
No, 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 no.
That was added to the.
We met on Tuesday.
Yeah, but it wasn't over five and it didn't look like it was. Saying we should have gone ahead. I'm saying, I know what you're saying. You're saying we should have addressed it anyway. In advance, in case it would. And that's what I asked. If you think we're in jeopardy of going over five, let me know as soon as possible. And we weren't in jeopardy of it. So. These things happen, and this is what Mr. Monday talks about when he talks about micromanagement. You cannot micromanage these things, especially water department, because you don't know what you're dealing with till you dig it up. And this is what he means. We would have had that, if we had paid, if we had had seven hundred dollars yesterday afternoon. That concrete would be sitting right now and all it would need is asphalt and it'd be reopened tomorrow. But now, we had to wait till the meeting today, because the total project was gonna go over five. Now we're over five and we don't have a quorum and we can't get the rock. And we can't complete the project and the state highway department is gonna be breathing down our neck again, but more important than that, our. Our citizens are gonna be upset and they have a right to be. And if it hadn't been for that limit, we would have already done this. So you, you, I mean, I can lead, I can actually, I can load up our agenda with things that might be over five thousand dollars. We don't have time to deal with the things that are actually over five thousand dollars. We don't ever get to them and sometimes we don't have a quorum. And you're saying, would it, could it, should it? It is what it is.
Which city council meeting have, regular call meeting have, we not had a quorum in the last six months?
We've had several special call meetings and how many times have you said, call a special call meeting?
I'm here. However, what I'm telling you is, if you can sit here, if you can sit here right now. And say, I have problems having forms as special call, if you can say that today. And if you can say, I've been asking for days in advance to let me know if you hit five thousand dollars on Tuesday night, you could have gotten approval. If, all I'm saying is it just made sense. It just made sense.
Tuesday night, it wasn't gonna be over five thousand dollars and we had a lot of other pending business. And, and yet here again today, we have three mi- matters. And yeah, I would, I would suggest they're incredibly urgent to our citizens. And, and again, we're not doing them. And again, nothing's been done on them. And nothing is gonna get done and the people aren't gonna be able to use Oakland and we're not gonna have a water manager and we're still gonna be in threat of losing. A, a mini ax that cut down these overhanging trees, cleaned out these ditches, which is what our citizens want. All because. Of issues dealing with the city council. So don't try to turn this around on me, administration. Or members of the city that work in the city, but this is not, that is not the problem. The problem is we didn't have a quorum today. And of the people who came, we couldn't do business. That's the problem. Don't try to change it.
I don't have to change it. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I don't have to change it. When we left the table on Tuesday night, this was not even an issue that you presented to the council.
It's because it wasn't an issue, wasn't over five thousand dollars.
Because you went out on a limb and decided that maybe I can get a quorum on Friday is not the city council's fault.
No, sir. We, we scheduled this meeting because of the general manager discussion, because you, you wanted, because you specifically asked for a few days to consider it.
I did.
In between that time, I'm, I'm informed that it might go over five. So I said, well, if it might go over five, we need to add that to Friday's agenda. That's what happened, period.
Exactly, so don't.
Don't try to say something happened, didn't.
I'm telling you exactly what happened. On Tuesday night, Mr. St. Columbia sat right there and told you he would not be here. Ms. Davis was not here on Tuesday. So the best case scenario was you had four people who could be here today, that you had an emergency. That could have not been an emergency on Tuesday, but you didn't address it. And you decided on Thursday, I think I'll throw this in and we'll talk about it, is not the city council's fault.
Now you want me to read the future and ask you to approve things that aren't over five?
What I said repeatedly, that was, uh, uh, you know, a stretch for you to try to throw in the term micromanaging. But what I said, what I said, no, it's, it's your authority. And if you think you're gonna exceed your authority, it just makes sense to try to plan ahead, is what I said. That's what I said repeatedly. That is not complicated. People can understand.
Bottom line is, the city council didn't show up to conduct business. And you're trying to deflect responsibility. You did, good for you. This Ford did, good for her. And some couldn't and couldn't be helped. But the bottom line is, it's their responsibility. That's what they get paid to do. That's what the citizens expect them to do. We're all here. We're trying to take care of the citizens. Where are they?
Here's a practical problem.
Your responsibility to manage this situation, manage it. And sometimes management means planning ahead. If I can look at something in ignorance and say, it looks like five thousand dollars, you understand it, ought to be able to plan for five thousand dollars. And y'all be able to assume, maybe I won't be able to get a quorum on Friday. So maybe I ought to do it while I have everybody here.
Here's the practical issue and, and, and. Uh, did I see? I hear both of your frustrations. Here's the thing I see is, is, is city attorney from a practical standpoint. I don't know how we go from. Uh, there's communication issues and some things that, that, that may not be happening. The mayor said, he, he, he called his department head and, and, and it's, and those who are the supportness of the water departments to say, is, is it gonna be five thousand dollars? And he said, no. And then the clerk tells the day, well, it's right at twenty thousand dollars. I don't know how we go from, it's not gonna be five thousand dollars to. To up to twenty thousand. But wait, 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 y'all not let me finish. You ain't let me finish. You're not, it, it, it is a mystery in this sense. Here's the thing. The water department is charged with the knowledge and the skill set to anticipate things. When I go to get a car service or do anything else, I know that I have this issue and this issue. And in the very beginning, when I'm making an evaluation, they said, we're gonna evaluate and they powerful, we do anything, they'll say, this, we got this issue, this issue, this issue, this issue, this issue. When the hole is open, you begin to say, we have this issue, this issue, this is issue. And you would think that in the first three or four days, that you all would have a great, this, this has been going on two weeks now. In the first three or four days, there should have been some assessment. Uh, and I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm saying for its planet. We've had two council meetings since this has been open. And the issue was, in those first few or four days, there should have been someone to say, hey. This is clearly gonna be over five thousand. We gotta get gravel, that's seven hundred. We gotta, uh, do this, we're gonna do this ourselves. And we got a clamp we gotta make. When he started making a clamp and began to do it, he got to say, hey, man, what's, what's this gonna cost? I understand the mayor can't illustrate every situation, but I'm saying with this one being open as long as, as long as it has, that's what it is now.
And I don't micromanage my water department or my water manager, and I rely on their judgment. And, and what, what he told you is true. You can't anticipate it until you see it. They didn't get the concrete off the pipe until yesterday.
We didn't.
They didn't get the concrete off the pipe until yesterday.
Without a P O. We could, you know, uh, all we had to do was call them, have a P O, they bring the gravel. We didn't know that we owed them money.
You, you're telling us would it, could it, should it, that y'all are smarter? Good, good job, Mr. Evoli. You're smarter than the water department who does this every day. I don't say that and I don't micromanage them. And I don't presume that I'm smarter than the people who, who are trained and who have been doing this for their career. What they, no, sir, what you told me. We smarter not to figure it out.
I'm apparently smarter than you.
The answer is.
If I would have had five thousand dollars approved, I'm apparently smarter than you.
And that's why you wanna micromanage everybody.
I didn't manage, I didn't manage a single thing. I did not manage a single thing. I did not talk to anybody in the water department. I didn't talk to you. I didn't talk to anybody in this room. This is the very first thing that I've heard about this issue. So I haven't tried to manage anything. We're here because of your mismanagement. You understand that? Your mismanagement is what brings us here. Because if you had managed it properly. You would have had the money that you needed to get it done, if you had managed it properly.
Are you saying I didn't manage it properly either?
I thought your sign said the buck stops here.
Well, what you're saying is the buck stops with you, because you're not gonna let us fix it and, and the council members didn't show up. So we would have a form. How many ti- how many times, how many times has the city attorney said? We should call, we should call a meeting every day if we have to, because of all the issues we have. But we called a meeting today at your request. And we didn't have a quorum and we can, and now you're, now you're second guest in the water department. And they couldn't tell you how much it was gonna cost over five until yesterday. They couldn't tell me that. They couldn't tell me that, and it's hard enough to get our business conducted when we do have a quorum. And now you want me to put things on there and read the future and try, I asked them. I asked them because they're the experts, I don't think I'm smarter than they are, and I don't micromanage them, and I asked them that it first happened, is this going to be over five? Do you think it's going to get to be over five, do we need to go ahead and do this and put it on the agenda? And the answer was no, and the first problem with it, it was no. But then, after the first problem was fixed, they found other problems, and that was yesterday. So it wasn't Tuesday, it was yesterday, Mr. Evly, you don't know that, because you're not out there, how many times have you stopped at the hole and looked at it? How many times have you asked them what they think, this is what they do every day, how many vendors, how many vendors have you asked?
Make up your mind, make up your mind, make up your mind. I told you, I, no, I manage money, I don't manage holes, that's what I said, now you want me to manage the hole, you want me to stop at the hole. You got to figure out whether you want me to manage or not manage, I do not manage, I'm managing the issue that has been presented to me at this table. And what I simply did was make a suggestion to them. That if it looks like it's going to go over five, you ask for authority to go over five. I didn't say you have to know, I do have the same questions, Mr. Valley, how do we get from, it's not going to hit five to twenty? I won't go there because.
They lifted the concrete off of it yesterday, that's how, and if you, and if you knew about this and asked him and went by there, you would know this. You don't have to do that, but if you're going to make statements that you're smarter than they are, then I would think you would at least try to learn more about it.
I was smarter than they were, I said I was smarter than you are.
Question you just asked me.
I want you to get it right, I want you to get it right.
If it looks like.
I didn't say I was smarter than they were, I said smarter than you, you understand, I said smarter than you.
Yeah, well, and and I'm, and I'm telling you.
Believe that part.
That I'm telling you, I asked him the same question you just said, when you think it's going to go over five, or that we might, let me know so we can get the authority.
Yes, sir.
And that's, and they, and because this is what they do for a living, this is what they do as a career. They advised me that it was going to be under five until just a couple of, the last twenty-four hours. And so we're doing this at the first possible opportunity, and you're still criticizing it. And there's still nobody here to do it.
People, people listening have heard me make.
Then they can't get seven hundred dollars worth of rock, and people are still going to be inconvenienced, and you're trying to blame me?
Mr. Mayor.
Now, I know you want the, the last word.
I, I will get the last word, because, because you've taken everything I said out of context, I had a, I. No, 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 because I was having a conversation with them, I was having a conversation with them.
What we've done, and we have the meeting, and we didn't have the council here to do it, it's that simple. If you didn't have the five thousand dollar limit, if y'all didn't try to micromanage the mayor, it would have already been done yesterday.
The fact is, the fact is, the fact, bye, the fact is, I was having a conversation with them. And you jumped in and got offended because you thought I was talking to you, I simply made a suggestion to them. And I have no problem with whatever the city employees have done.
Well, my, my question is, hold on just a second.
I, I understand, I understand everything you said.
Yeah. And showed him, boy, and he looked at it, we had to open it up way more because of the drains, they had to do the whole catch base. It was a whole lot because of that storm.
But see, if we could have got the gravel with a P O. It, it, it wouldn't have been no issue, it wouldn't have been, the price wouldn't have went up, we'd have got the gravel through the water company.
Well, my question is.
But, but that's not.
But we owe these people.
I understand, I understand what you're saying right now, I was just saying, if it, if we had all these questions about hitting five. Just ask for the extra, and he got offended, because that implicates, he's a person who should have asked for it on Tuesday. We're getting close to five, that's simple to me, I'm getting close to five, I'm getting close to five. Can we, look, if we go over five, will you give me authority to go, that's simple, we had everybody here. But that's not even, just saying, that, that, I'm not, I wouldn't even been out of shape about it, I'm just saying, we're in this position, and you don't have people here to vote. Because the simple thing didn't get done, I was not been out of shape about it, that was just a suggestion, if you think you're going over five, then go ahead and ask for it. All of this stuff about who was smarter and all of that, I didn't bring that to this table, I never do, I'm just talking facts. He ran out, offended, acting like a, oh, is the radio still going? Okay, I'm done.
Here's the thing I say is a practical matter, what, you all got down to the concrete, the bid you have here from D Square Construction. Say remove concrete from around Oakland Avenue, cut the asphalt box, build a catch base box, and et cetera. And that, that estimate is eight thousand nine and sixty-six dollars forty-one cent. Uh, when it's, when we got down, you saw the concrete at some point, uh.
That, that started yesterday.
That started yesterday, well, the other part I'm going to say is, you have Garrison at the machine shop. Doing a, doing a bid, and he gave you a quote on, on the twentieth, uh, for three thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars, and then you have asphalt. Quote, quote, six hundred fifty-seven dollars, and that's another quote, now, I, I, I agree that, uh, I agree. With this nonsense, but I keep trying to advise the mayor, I kind of try to advise department head. You already know coming down the road, that you're going to run up against this wall. So, in its time, I, I'm opening up anything, I'll be, I would be sending a memo to the city council, saying, we're about to open up this, we may need your approval. Uh, we may need a special call meeting, just as a practical, practical thing. Uh, the city council has not changed it, I've asked the city council to change it many times, they refused to change it, but it's been that law since two thousand eight, it's been on, on the books. And I've advised every mayor, this mayor and every other mayor I've dealt with, to, to, hey, what I would do if I was you, I would keep walking through the front door, whatever that's the issue. I agree with that, a hundred percent, when I saw that you were on Oakland Street and do, I said, oh, this is going to be over five thousand dollars. And it caused special call meeting today, when I saw it last Friday, I didn't see it the day before, because, uh, I called the, uh. Uh, other department, the police department, I thought, why, why, why the police out here directing traffic? And then when I got down there to you, I said, oh, this is a giant hole, uh, we probably ought to do something, but. Uh, there was never a special call meeting, there was no mention of it the other, the other day. Here, here's what I'm going to say, you all are taking offense about whether you had choice, but what I'm saying is, when you know you have a project, but a road is falling in. You have to start out with assumption, it's going to be above five thousand dollars, I know you're saying it's not over five thousand dollars, right? Because here's the thing, because me, I would be calling, Ken, Ken Whelan, we need you down here to look at this. And, uh, do a, do a spec plan, you say, well, we don't take all that, well, I do that, I'm going to give a job. But at the same time, you know there's going to be something that you can do, something you can't do. And the situation, anytime you come to state highway, I would always sum this over five dollars, but. I'm saying.
But then, but then, uh.
But I'm saying, but that's what the practice should do, because here's the problem that, that the water department is suffering from, and you're publicly tempted. But Ken has said over and over and over again, he's keenly aware of the five thousand dollar limit. He agrees with me, walk through the front door, and that's almost everything, is walk through the front door, it's not a criticism of you all, it's one of those things that, what happens is. The city council is tired of seeing four thousand nine hundred dollars, four thousand nine hundred dollars, I bet you if I looked up the four thousand nine hundred dollar. Enforces the city have, we probably have two hundred of them this year, and that's, that's wild speculation on my part, but what I'm saying is this. Almost every invoice is right at five thousand dollars for every little thing, and it's one of those things that. Most of them are serial contracts, I've given that opinion before, but why do you tell them, when you start going through, you're making a, a major leak? I would have identified as a major leak, and said, we need to start working on, this is going to be over five thousand dollars, we need to anticipate, because here's the thing, from your history. When you did it before, you knew it was going to be twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, last time you had to do, deal with the state highway. So I would assume that we go there and then work our way down from there, if you work way down from there, you already had authority, that's all, that's all I'm saying, now, that's not a quorum. Today, there was a quorum the other night, we had a, a, a meeting where we discussed things in detail the other night. Right now, i- it has to be fixed, but the city council can't get you authority, they don't have a quorum, and then the other part about it is, it has to be fixed, and this, and, and. When Mr. Ettle keep, uh, saying is that, listen, I would approve five thousand, that's the part that the mayor's not here. He's, he's, he, all the thing they want is the information, and but the problem is, the revelation that the department head still haven't gotten. If you give the information, you'll get the money, I remember one night, we sit here, and we went back and forth, the city council, if you go back and look at it. Historically, and I'm not fussing at you, uh, uh, Mr. Patterson. It seems like floodgates open when they come in and present, like, oh, council approved it, council approved it, council approved it, council approved it. If you look at the history, the city council has approved virtually everything that y'all have asked for, every department. The things that they don't approve, the ones that, that come around the back door, they say, why'd you do this, why'd you do that, why'd you do this, why'd you do that? But everyone of them come to the front door and say, we need this, they'll sit here like, 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 uh, the old men from a generation, go, what you need that for? And all that kind of stuff, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the council, but I might ask for money from my dad, and my dad fussing me, what you need some money for? Why you need some money, where you going, all that kind of thing, and that's what I hear many times when, when they fuck, but, just like, just like with my dad. Oh, here it is, I've never heard them deny the, the, the city on any. Any, any issue that the department head said we actually need, and the department head came to the front door, I haven't seen it, have you seen it, Madam Clerk? Have you seen it, uh, Mr.? Have you seen him with that?
No, but the reality is, this is an open hole on Oakland Street, that everybody saw, nobody had a, it wasn't a problem, it was not a problem. And so, uh, just made sense to me, we got this hole open down here, and we can all see it, it, hey, uh, we might go over, you know, just give us additional authority. Nobody would argue about the open hole on Oakland, but what happens is, see, because what happens is, is, you know, this is getting close to election season too, so we come in here. And we grandstand and parade around about how it's an emergency and people are not here, and, well, damn, did you plan for it? You didn't plan for it, and see, that's why he got offended, because it's a lack of planning on his part. Because this could, this issue, you want to throw around the term micro managing, I hadn't stopped and tried to talk to none of y'all about the hole, fix the hole.
Yeah.
If you need some money, tell me you need some money to fix the hole, but you got to do it in a proper context, in a proper, so, I, it, it, it wasn't supposed to go all those different directions. I was just saying, hey, in the future, if you got this situation, just go, go ahead and get the, what, what, did it hurt anybody to get the approval?
No, no.
Don't hurt nobody.
And what has happened was, Patterson, the department heads have become victims of, it's tension between mayor and council. Uh, the mayor keeps stating that they're micromanaging, but the issue is, every mayor know that they're spending less than five thousand dollars. And I keep telling every mayor, don't spend over five thousand dollars without council approval, and the mayors try to go back and spend money how they want to spend it. Then they get upset when the council doesn't want to appropriate the money, but the bottom line is, I think the council is going to prove it. I can't tell you to go out and spend it because over five thousand dollars, but I can tell you that you have to do your duty under, under the law. You don't have the, the spending authority to do it, but you have a, you have a duty to get it fixed. Now, on your other projects, what I would do simply is, is this, I would look at every project that I have right now, and say, I have these ten projects. They're all going to be over five thousand dollars, I presume, once council wants you to go and prove them, prove them for this month, for this project, this project, this project, this project. And get it done, that's the simple way of doing it, but instead, we, we get these, every meeting, well, this right here might be five thousand dollars. I'm not trying to be mayor, I'm not going to file for the office mayor, I'm going to file for the office city attorney, the vice mayor, I come in with this. I have these projects that, that I think will be over five thousand dollars this month, why don't you approve all of these projects, and I need appropriation for each one of them. And that would be the end of it, we would have to have all this back for, so, as city attorney, I advise you, as department head, you got a list of projects, you know that, or you think may go over five thousand dollars. Get all of them together, so this one going to cost about fifteen, this one going to cost about ten, this might cost thirty, and so, I need appropriation for all of these, and, and, and et cetera. Here are the people I, I, I know that we took you for this, 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 because what happens is, we keep coming back with the same circle, because you only have a certain set of contracts that you can work with. And we owe this person this, we owe this person that, just have that candid conversation, and then it could prove, because the council has not rejected you. They're not turning you away, even with them barely able, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the barely able, because their frustration is. Every time we come back, the mayor said, well, I hate to spend it, well, some of the things you, you should get, you should get tired of, it's, this is like a broken marriage. Where the mayor is the husband, the council is the wife, and, and the husband says, I spent the money because I want to spend it, what you going to do about it? And, and the council, council like the wife is saying, well, what, you need to talk to me about spending money, you ain't the only one in this house. Right, now, that didn't happen in my house, but the thing I'm just saying is, that I'd heard in divorces, and all that kind of thing, that's what I'm saying. Uh, but, uh, I would say under that same scenario, that same metaphor, happy wife, happy life, if he just talks to the council, tell them. Uh, listen, we're in this together, here's what I got to, here's what I want to spend, here's what I want to do, and just do it, and that'd be that.
Okay.
Once the council approves it, that'd be that.
Okay.
So, none of this person towards you, and then nobody's trying to disrespect you, but when I saw that hole in the ground, I agree with that, I said, that's five thousand dollars, any day of the week. Now, I'm not, I'm not a water person, but that's the first thing I said, uh, they're going to call Mr. Whelan, it's going to be five thousand dollars, ten, twenty, twenty-five, and it's twenty right now. When I was driving by, I said, oh, every time I drove by, I looked in the hole, I said, oh, that's five thousand dollars. And then I saw more trucks that had went out, I said, oh, that's five thousand dollars, so I didn't hear anything, so, but it is, but it is, Mr. Patterson. Thank you for what you're doing, man, we appreciate you.
Uh, y'all, y'all, y'all want to get this other guy, y'all?
The council.